Order. Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Lori Krenski.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Scott Fishwell.
Here.
Dennis King.
Here.
Let's pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so that brings us to our board training. So, Mr. McIntyre has created or developed some training for us. And this is just typical ethics training, boardsmanship training, stuff that we try to touch on every other year just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So I will turn it right over to you.
Very good, thank you. Thank you to all for letting me be here today and talk about these issues. I hope you'll jump in if you have any questions, if you hear something that doesn't sound right or doesn't, or that just, you know, maybe you feel like you need more information on. I'm happy to provide that, so please jump in. I thought I would start with ethics. So, if you've not ever taken any of the ethics training that's provided through the Ohio Ethics Commission and other governmental offices in Ohio at the state level, I strongly recommend doing it. It's a really good use of your time to understand all of the many, many restrictions that apply to you as elected public officials in the state of Ohio. So, there are three main sources of ethical and conflict of interest requirements. The first is a statute that applies only to school district board members. Doesn't apply to any other public official. And it's a statute that essentially says that no board member can have a financial interest, direct or indirect, in any public contract held by the board that you are a member of. So, the language of direct or indirect is probably the most difficult part of this particular requirement because an indirect financial interest could mean many, many things. There is a recent case where a spouse of a board member worked for a law firm that that particular school district used. And the court found that that was an indirect financial interest because monies were flowing from the school district to the law firm. That board member's spouse was a member of that law firm, didn't do any work for the school district, but was a member of the law firm. And the court found that's an indirect financial interest in a contract held by that board, and that's prohibited. The challenge with this particular statute is that there are no ways to work around it, if you will. You can't recuse yourself. Recusal is not enough. The law basically says that the contract can't exist. In other words, it would be void. So if that situation ever occurs, if you know that your district is in the process of considering a contract with a particular vendor, and you have a direct or an indirect financial interest in that vendor, then please come forward as soon as you know that, hopefully before we enter into that contract. Alternatively, if you know of a contract that we already have in place that you have a direct or indirect financial interest in because of your relationship with that company, then please come forward because we have to make arrangements to find a different vendor to provide those services because that contract technically is void on its face. Now, if you are a shareholder in a corporation that sells products to the school district, that's not something to be worried about unless you own 5% or more of that particular country, company. So, if, for example, a large paper company is selling paper to the district, and it's a publicly traded company, and you own some shares or your mutual fund owns some shares in that particular company, there's nothing to worry about, again, as long as your stake of ownership is not 5% or greater. So, it's a really onerous statute for us. We work really hard to make sure that we don't have that particular issue because the consequences are really, they're unforgiving. We either have to end that relationship, or the board member has to end their role on the board. Those are the only two options. The second area of our ethical restraints are in what are generally referred to as the ethics laws. So you'll hear that terminology. And if you go onto the Ohio Ethics Commission website, you'll see a great deal of information, including training materials, on the ethics laws. And so, that covers any number of particular topics. Primarily what the ethics laws are concerned about are prohibiting you from using your position as a public official to benefit yourself or your immediate family in any way. It is also concerned about you using your position on the board to benefit somebody with whom you have a business relationship. So, you don't want to accept anything of value from any school vendor. You don't want to accept the payment of travel expenses or honoraria from a vendor or somebody who's seeking to be a vendor in the district. Now, can the district pay for your travel expenses to go to a school event like the Ohio CAP Conference? Absolutely, because that's the school district paying, not a vendor. You just don't want to accept even anything of value from somebody who is in a business relationship with the district or who is seeking a business relationship with the district. So if you've ever been to the CAP Conference, and you go to the trade show, and you walk the trade show, and you see the booths, and they hand out, I don't know, pencils and pens, maybe pads of paper, maybe the occasional cap or a T-shirt or something like that. Those are all individuals who are representing companies that may already have a business relationship with the district. But if they don't, they're certainly seeking to have one. That's why they're at the CAP Conference trade show. Accepting those items are, would not be a violation of the ethics laws because the ethics laws say that those are nominal value items. And they don't, they don't, they essentially exclude them from the definition of anything of value because they have such a low-cost item. Now, if a vendor says, "Hey, I have tickets to the Browns. You want them? You want to join me?" The answer is, "I cannot accept them. I cannot accept a free ticket from you. If you are so inclined and you want to still go to that game, you just have to pay your own way." You could still go, there's nothing that prevents you from going. You just can't accept the free ticket. Another common situation that comes up from time to time is if you are at an event that you're essentially there in your official capacity. Perhaps it's a luncheon, perhaps it's a conference like the CAP Conference, and you're essentially, the district is paying for you to be there. And they have like a door prize raffle. You're entered into it automatically. You see this all the time. And you win. Let's say it's like a really nice television set, as they often are. That television set is not yours personally. It's really the school district's. So, you can either decline to accept that item, or you can bring it back to the district, and it'll be put to good use here. It, those sorts of things do not happen at the CAP Conference, obviously, because they understand the restrictions. But I will tell you that other school industry associations often do these sorts of things. I just had one involving a television, and it was a group of athletic directors. And this particular athletic director won the television. He didn't pay to enter it, it was just he was automatically entered into it. And he brought it back to the district, and it's now in a conference room and the property of the school district. The third section of the ethics laws essentially are statutes that apply to all public officials that more or less capture the same ideas as the ethics laws except there are specific criminal penalties associated with them. So, for example, they say that there's, it would be a violation of the statute if you in any way benefit from a contract or an immediate family member of yours benefits from a contract that you authorized as a board member. So, a contract comes before the board, and you approve it, and somehow there's some benefit to you or an immediate family member, that would be a violation of this particular statute. Now, there are some workarounds in these particular situations where you can recuse yourself. You can stay out of any deliberations. You can stay out of any future discussions about renewing that contract or what have you. And so just, if anything like that ever occurs, please just bring it forward so we can deal with it, figure out what's going on, figure out if any of these laws apply. And if so, what are the workarounds? It's always better to do it before it happens. Unfortunately, the ethics laws do not really consider your lack of knowledge or your misunderstanding about something to be a valid defense. So if something like this has happened, please let us know so we can address it. But really work hard to make sure that it doesn't happen because saying you didn't know is not going to be a valid defense. Okay, the next topic I'd like to cover is the fraud, waste, and abuse in government reporting. Perhaps Gary's shared information with you already on this. It is now the law in the state of Ohio that everybody here has to be trained. That has to be completed by the end of November. And there is now a new system in place to report to the auditor of the state of Ohio, either in your name or anonymously, through any number of different platforms. I believe there's an app, there is a telephone number. You can mail a complaint in. And you can also go through a specific website for this type of reporting. And essentially, it is requiring and encouraging anybody to come forward if they see any type of fraud, waste, or abuse in the public domain. The examples that they cite for fraud are falsifying a timesheet, any kind of theft, knowingly misusing public money or property in any way. Those are all considered by the state auditor and under this legislation to be acts of fraud. They will investigate it, they will make a finding. Oftentimes, a finding like that would involve a recovery of some kind where the monies would be clawed back to the school district and that the, you know, the district would be made whole in that way. Examples of waste, and this is where it gets a little intimidating, a little scary because they talk about mismanagement, inadequate oversight, sloppy procurement or vendor selections. Those are all considered acts of waste, and that can be reported, investigated, and there can be a finding from the state auditor. Examples of abuse are situations where you would misuse our system in some way or particularly your employment with the district to benefit yourself. For example, you know, creating the need for otherwise unnecessary overtime. That would be considered an act of abuse, and that could be subject to an investigation and a finding of recovery. So stay tuned for more on that particular development in the state of Ohio. It's a big step for the state of Ohio to take, and I expect that there'll be a fair amount of activity in that area. The next topic is the Ohio Public Records Act. So, if you've never been to the Attorney General's website and looked up their resources, and they have a lot of different resources on the website, I strongly recommend you doing that. They have something that's called the Attorney General's Sunshine Law Manual. The Sunshine Laws are made up primarily of two statutes. One, the Public Records Act, and two, the Open Meetings Act. But it is a comprehensive guide to anything you would need to know, any question that could possibly occur to you in these areas. So, and they update it annually. It's really a good tool to have at your disposal. But essentially, the Ohio Public Records Act says that it's really any document that we keep, maintain, or possess that in some way documents our functions, our activities, our policies, our decisions, any of our many, many activities, and that we have control of. So, for example, you might get spam email, unsolicited requests from whatever business saying, "We have this product." Is that a public record? No, because you didn't, we didn't generate it. It doesn't have anything to do with us other than we received it. So there's no need to worry about things like that. But if you get that unsolicited advertisement, and then you forward it on to Gary saying, "Hey, this is something we might want to look into," the fact that you forwarded it is in fact a public record. Because now, it's something that we did, something that comes under our jurisdiction, and it does document some action, operation, or activity that we engaged in. We have a retention schedule. This is how we keep track of all of our public records. Our retention schedule is reviewed by the Riverside Local School District Records Commission. The Records Commission is made up of the board president, our superintendent, and our treasurer. It meets once a year. And one of the things that it does is to take a look at our retention schedule and decide, is it accurate? Do we need to revise it in some way? Is there some other information that might be needed in that retention schedule? It's a lengthy document. It's about 20 pages long. And it essentially categorizes all of the records that we keep, and in what form we keep them, and how long we keep them. That document is approved by the state of Ohio and the auditor's office and the Ohio Historic Connection. And that's what guides our, sort of, the way we maintain our records. A couple of suggestions. One is, when it comes to texting, I strongly advise against ever using the text message function on your personal phones for any type of communication related to board business. From time to time, you might get a text that says, you know, "Are you available for a meeting?" A communication like that is not really a public record. It's considered a transient record, something that has limited value for only a limited period of time. But if there's a group chat, if you're, if, you know, two or more of you are using that text feature to have communications about board meetings or board activities or board decision-making, I strongly, strongly recommend against doing that ever. And here's why. We don't, as a district, have control over your phones. That doesn't minimize the fact that it could still be a public record. But now we're in the unfortunate position of trying to retrieve information that we're not currently in control of. All of our email, if you're using your school email account, is there. It's part of our system. It's backed up. It's all retained. We can retrieve that information when we need to. Should there be a public records request for electronic communications. But if you're using your, the text feature on your phone, we don't have a record of that. We're going to have to ask you for it. And then this is a really awkward situation because then you have to go through your phone, you have to do screenshots, you have to forward those screenshots. We, we trust that you will forward to us everything, but at the same time, we have no way of verifying that if in fact we were ever asked to verify it. The other thing is, what if your phone crashes? What if you lose your phone? What if those records disappear? Now, we don't have those records. You don't have them. We can't get them from you because they don't exist anymore. And now we're in a potential problem. So, please, please do not use the texting feature for anything having to do with school business. Another suggestion is, there is training that is required under Ohio law. Gary is your records custodian, and he is your appointed person essentially to do the training on your behalf. With Dennis being a new board member, that triggers an obligation to do another training. I strongly recommend that each of you do the training yourselves. Still have Gary as your appointed person, that's fine. But do the training yourself. It's worth the time. It is a very useful library of information, and it will answer whatever questions you might have. So, with Dennis being on the board, I strongly recommend that you take that training if you haven't already.
They are offering it at the OSBA conference on Tuesday. I think it's at like noon or 12:30, so that might be something that, because they only offer it once a month, maybe, so it's, you know.
Yeah, it's online, though.
Right, you can do it online. There's, they have a webinar once a month. I think it's on Zoom, they track your attendance. Or if you're at the CAP Conference, you can attend it live.
Okay.
Well, I'll give you that, thanks.
Thanks.
The next area is the second part of the Sunshine Laws, the Open Meetings Act. And essentially, a meeting is any pre-arranged gathering of a majority of the members of this body, so at least three people, when you're discussing board business. So it has to be those three items. So, if, for example, you're at the CAP Conference, and you all just end up in the same seminar, the same presentation at the same time, is that a meeting? No, it wasn't pre-arranged. And two, you're not going to be discussing board business. You're just there listening. So, if, if you're doing this in person, it could be a meeting. You know, like, let's meet for coffee and chit-chat about this particular item of board business. That would be considered a meeting. That has to be noticed. We have to have an agenda. Gary has to keep minutes. We have to make sure the public can go to that particular gathering. So, if you're doing it by email or text message or even by phone, it can also be considered a meeting. So, if board member A calls board member B and says, "Hey, let's talk about this item of school business." And then board member B calls C, now you have what's called a serial meeting. It didn't happen simultaneously, but it happened in parts. That would be considered a meeting because three of you had a conversation about board business at a meeting that wasn't properly noticed or open to the public. The same would be true sort of of a, kind of a wagon wheel approach where you have one board member at the center calling the other four board members. So, and that can happen if just that person at the center is calling two other board members and discussing board business. So, any discussion of board business, any deliberation, you know, sort of where you're weighing the options, you're trying to figure out if the reasons are good or bad, or am I in favor of this or not in favor of this? Any of that kind of activity all has to be at the board table at a properly noticed meeting. Now, if it happens to be an executive session topic, obviously you can go into executive session and have that discussion in private. But it has to be one of the express reasons for an executive session that are recognized by law. Executive session discussions, you know, are confidential. We can, under the law, designate them to be the highest status of confidentiality, which means a breach of that could have potential criminal penalties. Those are good tools to use to make sure that the business of the district that's discussed in executive session is in fact staying in executive session. So a common question that I get is, all right, if all of our discussions take place and all of our decision-makings and our, you know, our disagreements or arguing in favor or against a particular action, if all that has to take place at the board table at a properly noticed meeting, then what am I supposed to do between meetings? Where, where are the boundaries? You know? The vast majority of your time as a board member occurs between meetings. You only meet a couple of times a month, maybe a little more frequently from time to time. But you have all of this time between board meetings. The number one thing that you can do is gather information. So you're not deciding anything. You're not deliberating, should we do it, should we not? But rather, you're fact gathering. You're making sure you have the information that you need as a board member to participate constructively and actively and usefully at the next meeting or some future meeting down the road. It is not a violation of the Sunshine Laws in any way for you to have your questions answered about potential school business between meetings. You know, common examples of information gathering? How much does something cost? You know, we need more information. I just don't have enough information. I have all of these questions about an agenda item, and I'm not going to be able to vote on that agenda item unless I have my questions answered. That is a proper function for you to engage in between meetings. I think the best way to do that is to say, you know, you know an item is coming forward, or you've seen the agenda and you have some questions. Send an email, you know, to Chris or to Gary. Send it to your, you know, copy your fellow board members on it and say, "Hey, I see this on the agenda, and I have these questions. Here they are." And that's, that's good boardsmanship. That's 100% legal and appropriate. Because, you know, it's not a situation where we ever want you to be in where you don't have enough information to vote on something. So, so ask, please. I mean, don't ever feel like you should know something. Don't ever feel that you might be violating the Sunshine Laws by asking that question. And then someone will get you that information. It will be shared with the rest of the board, which I think is really good practice because if the questions have occurred to you, then they may have also occurred to your fellow board members, and they will benefit from that information. Now, when you receive that information, and let's say you email some questions. "I have these three questions. Please explain this, please explain that, and I need this data, or I need this financial information." Fine. We will get that information to you. It'll be shared with your fellow board members. But you have to stop there. No discussion, no deliberation about that information. Not by email, not by Zoom, not by text. Just stop short of actually trying to figure out what I'm going to do now. I've got the information, now I'm going to come to the board meeting. And you might get information and have more questions. That's fine, too. Ask those questions, we'll get you the information. That information will be shared with the other board members, so everybody has it. Now, where you get off track is if your questions are more about, you know, should we be doing something? Like, hey, I read this policy, and it doesn't really make sense to me. Is this, is this something we should be doing? Now you're into the business of weighing it, you're deliberating. That should take place at the board table. Or if you ask your fellow board members, "Well, what's your opinion on this particular item?" You know, "I feel strongly against this. Do you feel the same way?" Now you're into the business of weighing what to do, of deliberating. That, again, has to take place at the board table. Or the one that I see all the time, not here, elsewhere. Well, how would you vote on it? No, you're now into that business of trying to figure out what's the right answer. No, you're now into that business of trying to figure out what's the right answer, and that needs to take place. Or another common approach, here's what I recommend as a board member, I've seen this before, here's what we need to do, and you kind of lay out the various thoughts, ideas, recommendations that you have. In and of itself, that email probably isn't a meeting, or would require it, but as soon as you do that, somebody else is likely going to respond with their thoughts, and now we have a problem. So, from time to time, I will see, again, elsewhere, not here, somebody throw out a question like that, and then I'm copied on it, and I'll immediately jump in and say, please don't respond to this, this is a discussion that has to take place at the board table, thank you. So if you see that kind of thing, what's your opinion, here's what we need to do, here's my recommendation, how would you vote, you see any of that, just know that that's really about discussing the merits of something, and that has to take place in an open session, unless of course, it's an executive session topic. Any questions so far?
Well, you know, we have four committees.
Yes.
Two of us serve.
Yes.
And two of us are on the new side especially. So, sometimes there's question, like, I reminded him, you know, about, we do, to have a report, because we report out.
Yes.
That's just a simple thing.
Yes.
It's not discussion of board business.
Correct.
Correct. And then, for example, when Gary gives the financials, I always have just a couple of questions, because I just want to know, what is this?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good boardsmanship.
And that's fine.
That's what you want to do.
Okay.
And it is legal and appropriate to do.
Okay.
Collect as much information as you can.
Yeah, so information gathering is fine.
And sharing that information is fine too.
Okay.
Just, we want to stop right there and not get into the idea of discussing it, discussing the significance of it, discussing a problem, discussing how we should move forward, or how you feel about something. Keep all of those discussion topics for your board meeting.
For instance, on the one thing, Gary, like, if you think, maybe the full board might have a question, like, it's okay to put all of our names on it to get the information?
Okay.
That way, or if you don't want to, it's fine too, but if you, yeah, maybe the rest of the board's thinking about it, we definitely can do that.
Yeah, and that wouldn't be a problem, like, it's just a little bit of a learning curve to know, and this was the fewest questions I've had this time, because I'm getting familiar with the couple of items.
Well, school finance is a learning curve for a lot of people.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
I'm still worried.
All right. But, yeah, it's just clarification, information gathering.
Right, information gathering, or pushing information. So, Chris and Gary push a lot of information to you as a board member, you're reading that, that's 100% appropriate to do. You read something in there, and you have some questions, like, I think I need to know this and this, you could respond to that email with a question for additional information, again, totally appropriate.
A lot of times when we get individual questions, we answer them in the Friday packet, especially if they require some research. So put them into a Friday packet, so you all have it, it's all in one spot.
Okay.
That's great too.
Right.
Can I ask, is that our question?
No, there's no questions at this point, it's just simply training, sorry.
Thank you.
Next topic is, from time to time, there are situations where, you know, there would be maybe a request of the board members from somebody on the administrative team for input on something. I think we're really good about not doing that sort of thing, but I will tell you that in other districts, I see from my experience that there are these situations, for example, we want to do a press release, something happened where we feel like we need to notify our community about something. If, if we need to get board input on that communication, what it says, what it doesn't say, when it goes out, any of those particulars, we have to do that at the table. We cannot use email to say, hey, here's a draft of a press release, what do you think? Now, can a draft of the press release be shared with you? Absolutely, we're going to send this out tomorrow. But to ask for your input, soon as you see that, please hit the brakes, we're not going to provide input back to the administrative team unless we are at a board meeting. Now, there's a fair number of things that our board president does as a board president about providing input on different items, agenda items, other action items, et cetera. That's perfectly legal, because that's part of the board president's responsibility to help develop that agenda and help answer questions between board meetings for the administrative team. But the first thing the board president always asks herself is, am I just giving my opinion on something, or am I going to, am I speaking for the board? So sometimes those situations occur where we say, we can't really answer that question from the administrative team because Lori doesn't have the information, it has to be discussed by the board first. So we know where the lines are. If it's just like ministerial kinds of things, or Lori already knows the answer for the board's position, then yes, that can be shared. But what we don't want is like a group input session that doesn't occur at a meeting.
I think it's, if you get, like, if they essentially not saying, this is, we're going to send this out tomorrow, and you disagree with something, pick up the phone and like, call myself, or call Dr. Tino right away, because then that way we can put a meeting together to discuss it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
From time to time, you know, a board member will feel that they need to abstain on a vote. And, I just throw out this for your consideration, really, the only time you should abstain from a vote is when you are facing some kind of ethical restraint, a conflict of interest, if there's a legal reason that prohibits you from voting. We should never abstain just because we haven't made up our mind, or we're not sure, there are other ways to address that. Or you, sometimes a board member will abstain when you have a situation where, I don't know, it's particularly difficult, and you just, you just don't want any part of that. That's not, that's not an appropriate exercising of your right to abstain. Now, sometimes board members will abstain if they don't have enough information, and I understand that, that makes sense to me. I'm not sure that it's always legally required, but I know board members, as a matter of conscience, sometimes feel uncomfortable about voting on something where they don't have all the information. For example, one that comes up commonly is, I can't vote on those meeting minutes because I wasn't there at that meeting. That's really not a legal basis to abstain, this is a function of your job, and when you vote to approve something, it stands, or if you don't vote to approve it, then it doesn't stand. So just, just know that abstention should only be used in the rarest of circumstances, essentially where there's a legal reason that prevents you from casting your vote. Now we get into the area of sort of good boardsmanship, a topic that I generally refer to as board member communications. So, a board member receives information, or as we've talked about, is seeking information, or as we also talked about, is sharing information. What is the best way to handle this? My advice is that you, you receive that information, and you share it with the rest of the board, and you share it with your superintendent and your treasurer. If that information comes from a staff member, or a member of the community, or a vendor, or what have you, if you're getting that information as an individual board member, make sure the rest of you are aware of that information. It's, it's good boardsmanship for all of you to be aware of the information that's coming to you, or the information that you're generating. Now, when the superintendent or other, or Gary, or any other administrator shares information, the best practice is to share that with the full board. The Friday packet is a perfect example of that, you're all getting that information, you all have the benefit of it, you know, you, you know, you have that sort of obligation to each other to make sure you're all on the same page. Now, superintendent-treasurer communications, so, you know, can you contact the superintendent or the treasurer on some kind of district-issue board business item? Yes, you can, of course, to share information, or to seek additional information. But what you shouldn't do is use that conversation or that other formatted communication to start talking about the issue. Because what we don't want to happen is, information goes to Chris about something from you, about how you're going to vote or not vote on something, and then Chris shares that with another board member, and then a third board member, and now Chris is that hub of that wheel, and basically sharing information to all the board members about the kinds of things that should take place in open session at a properly noticed meeting. Phone calls or in-person requests to the superintendent or other administrators, I, I know it happens, I don't prefer that, just as a matter of practice, because that's a situation where you all don't have the information that the one board member now has. And so, sometimes a situation like that will occur, and then Chris can capture that, and has captured it in the Friday packet, to make sure that all of you have the benefit of that information. The idea is that the five of you function as a team, no one of you has any particular authority, the majority of you do, and so it's really important that all of you have the information, and then you vote as you will, yes, no, you know, however your belief is on a given item, but we do that at the table, after everybody has all the information that they need to cast that vote. Board agendas, so, it's essentially the responsibility of the superintendent in cooperation with the board president to prepare the agenda for all the business items coming before the board at a meeting. I know we follow the 48-hour rule now, where if it's not brought forward within 48 hours in advance of the start of that meeting, then it has to wait for a subsequent meeting. Some board members will review their agendas at the prior meeting, so, we'll review the agenda for the next meeting, and we make sure we're getting the board's input on those items, that's a useful tool. Another thing is that some boards have adopted a standard that essentially says, once the agenda is completed, and that, that would be the 48-hour rule for us, then if, if the board wants to change that agenda, it needs at least four of the five of you to agree on changing it. That's a common approach that's out there that's useful to consider. That way you really control what's on the agenda at least 48 hours in advance. And then, you know, we go by Robert's Rules of Order, and so if you've not, if you don't have a copy of Robert's Rules of Order, we can get you one, it's really useful, it's basically all of the protocols that we follow when we are having a meeting. Policy 9150 is a really good policy to give some attention to. It's the policy that relates to board members being in our buildings, and so, if you're interested in visiting the schools, or the classrooms, you know, our policy requires that you make advance arrangements for that visit, so that the building principals and the superintendent are aware of that visit. It's not intended to keep you out of the building, but just to make sure that people know that you're going to visit the building. Now, if you're a parent, and you're in the building as a parent, like, there's a parent-teacher conference, or you have a meeting with your child's teacher, that's perfectly acceptable, you know, you're, you're always a board member, no matter how hard you try to take that hat off, but when you're there as a parent, you know, that's an obvious exception to the general rule. So, if you're planning on visiting the building, just know that you should make advance arrangements to do that, so that everybody's aware that that's happening. Sometimes people get confused that you're there in some sort of inspection-type basis, or you're there in a supervisory capacity, and neither of those are true, because as board members, you don't have that legal authority, but you're just there to gather information, to see something for yourself. So just make those, make those arrangements in advance. Any particular questions on any of those items?
When you say make arrangements in advance, because I mean, there's, sometimes there has been information gathering, I serve on the facilities committee, and, you know, like, let's say, prior to a meeting, I want to see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So, what is the procedure for?
Yes, so my, my recommendation is you call Chris.
To what?
You call Chris, you call your superintendent, and you ask, I want to see the building, here's when I want to see it, what do I need to do? And then Chris will make those arrangements for you, he'll let the building know that you're coming, he'll make sure that someone's there to assist you if you need assistance, maybe you don't need assistance, that's fine too, but just so that people know that you're, you're going to be there. Sometimes calling the building principal makes sense, but the building principal is going to call Chris anyway, so that's why I recommend starting with Chris. Again, it's not to keep you out of the building, or to slow you down in any way, but just to make sure that you have access, and that you don't end up having access to something you shouldn't. So, you know, in order to be involved, in order to receive information, it's confidential student information, you have to have a legitimate educational purpose to have that information. The law is very particular on who has that authority, who has, where there is or is not a legitimate educational purpose, and so we want to make sure that none of that information is inadvertently disclosed to you as a board member, because as a board member, you would have to have a specific purpose to know confidential student information. We don't just routinely share that with board members.
Well, we've had some improvements in the district, and you don't want to jump on that while school's just starting, so I did want to see the new completed floor, for example, of the moat, and the gym, and, you know, the new entrance, and all those kind of things, so I didn't think that was the same thing as information gathering.
It is, you know.
Okay.
Seeing it for yourself is information gathering.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's good, good boardsmanship, making sure that you have the information that you need, so that you can, you know, you can do your job as a board member. Just a couple of words on our policies and our administrative guidelines. So, the policies are the work of the board, they are essentially the board's statements to the administrative team, to all staff, to parents, students, and the whole community about your expectations for how this district is to operate. Your job as board members, and just in a couple of words, is essentially that you do not run the district, but you do see to it that it's run well. And so those policies are your statements to everyone as to what your expectations are as a board. It might not seem this way, but there's virtually nothing more important than what you say in your policies. They are time-consuming to read, they are time-consuming to go through the revision and update process, but please do so with great diligence and attention, because they are, they're, they're typically where I start when I get a question. So somebody will call and say, hey, what about this? And I will find out what our policies say, because that's our answer. And I will find out what our policies say because that's our answer. And then, you know, we start from there. So we're going to be getting a very large update from our policy service. We use NEOLAs as most districts do in the state of Ohio. And that update, I don't know, I think they, they put out a little blurb recently that it's not coming until sometime in October.
Yeah, I heard it's coming out soon. It usually comes on August, but then I emailed our rep last week. He said very soon, whatever that means.
Yeah.
They put something up today specifically on one, but nothing.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Nothing from the board policies.
So for some of you, this will be your first round of policy revisions, so take a look at those with great care. There's lots of changes that will be recommended by NEOLAs. Some of them are legally required changes. You know, there's a change in the law, so that shows up in our board policies. But many of them are optional. They're at your discretion and they really help shape the district in the way that the whole board wants it shaped. And so please spend the time to go through those policies and especially during update season, which happens twice a year, as Gary said, typically in August and typically the end of January, early February. It's a little behind schedule because of the size of this update, but then as Chris pointed out, we will get updates, smaller updates throughout the year. And so really spend the time on that. Administrative guidelines, on the other hand, are not your pronouncements. They are not developed by you. They're not approved by you. They are developed by the superintendent or the treasurer. They are essentially the superintendent's and treasurer's interpretation of what you've said in your policy. So think of the policies as the law and the administrative guidelines as the regulations. And we make you aware of those. They're available online. You can certainly have input on those, but they are the responsibility of the administrative team to develop because they're, it's their interpretation. But if you're really trying to understand how the administrative team takes what you say in your policies and puts it into effect, take a look at the administrative guidelines because that's what their purpose is. I know that we're almost out of time. Any particular questions or anything?
You did mention text messaging and things like that. What about social media?
So if it's a school district, social media account, then, you know, any, that is full of public records. If you're posting on that, that's going to show up in our records retention. If you're, if you have an individual account, you know, as Denise Brewster, I have my own individual social media account, is that a public record? Probably not a public record because we don't control it. It's you on your own. You're one board member. You don't have the ability to make decisions for the whole board. That said, I will tell you that from time to time, we get public records requests for that sort of thing because there's a perception that somehow it's a district account, but if it's your individual account, it's not a public record.
But if you're talking about, you know, board-related business, board members?
I strongly advise against that.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to give you an example and this is just for your review.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. It can wait. It doesn't have to be now because I will.
Okay. Any other questions? Steve, we only have a couple of minutes.
If there's more questions, I know.
I don't.
Anybody need a quick link for a quick regular session?
Yes, it would be nice.
All right.
Well, thank you all.
No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we have about three minutes till regular session. So if anybody needs an agenda or anything, they're up at the top of the stairs there.